I would like to just have, take one minute for the media who are here to introduce themselves so we make sure we know who they are. We have somebody from the News Journal and so this is having watched politics for a very long time in Volusia County. I deeply believe that what has happened to Heather has dropped below the standards of what we have seen in this county for county council campaigns. And it's been very disappointing to me personally. I've not been active politically in my life, but I've watched politics very closely. And some of the stuff in this advertisement is just way beyond what we as voters have come to expect in Volusia County. And I think it's amplified by the fact that the people that are behind it have really amplified this negativity. And I think it's rather disappointing, and this is one of the many undercurrents that's going on here. But that's all that I wanted to say is my disappointment that in a political race when people should be talking about issues, they should be talking about policy, they should be talking about what is good for Volusia County, the ads that we have seen address none of this. It's all scurrilous, negative, hateful information, and there's virtually nothing in these advertisements that talk about whether Heather has good policy ideas, where she is on the issues. And if somebody would take a moment to listen to what she says about policy and issues, I think you'd find her inclusive. I think you would find her very careful to listen to all people. I think she would like to take a sensible position on policy in Volusia County. And I think it would be wonderful, in my opinion, to have a woman on the council. I think that's a wonderful idea for Volusia County. I think she really is a change agent because of those ideas that she's not going to be beholden to the same old billionaires who have long dominated Volusia County, and we know who they are. She's quite independent in her thinking, she's quite independent in where she comes from, and I think she would be just a wonderful addition to District 4. So may I introduce to you Volusia County Council, next, our next councilwoman in District 4.
I think we can all hear me, right? Okay. But I really want to thank you all for coming out today and showing your support. It is greatly appreciated. And obviously, the reason we're having this press conference today, your support is even more appreciated, so thank you very much. But first of all, I'd like to introduce my family. This is my daughter Megan, who, my daughter Megan, as most of you know, just recently graduated from the University of Florida and is now an engineering consultant up in Atlanta. And my wonderful husband Randy of 12 years. He's very supportive. And any of the signs that you see around town, most of you know that he has put up every single nut. He has definitely been a big help. But part of the, or actually, the whole reason that we came out today was, there's a couple different points that I want to make, and I want to make sure that my voice is heard. Because up until now, you know, I've been having a lot of questions asked, and people have been saying, you know, well, you haven't really been getting your story out. Number one, we don't really know you, so I'd like to explain a little bit about me and my background today so you understand me more as a person, but also to really respond to some of the negative stuff that's been coming out and get that aspect out too, because right now I think it's extremely one-sided and a lot of misinformation. So since the primary, where I beat my opponent with 43% of the vote, with my family and I have had to endure humiliating and hateful attacks about me personally. And the ads have been widely published and republished in the media. And my first inclination was to ignore Al Smith and to ignore the special interest PAC and to just, you know, but now it's just truly, truly gone too far. So, you know, this is one of the pieces, I think we have, there's a number of pieces that have been out, I'm sure you've all seen them in your mailboxes, a lot of money spent on these. And I'm actually here today to answer some of these questions and set the record straight. So let's talk about the ads. These ads are trying to portray me as a misfit and him as a paragon of virtue. This could be no further from the truth. They are apparently misleading, you know, for, let me start, I'm going to start on a couple of points. So my career, my career in law enforcement, this is something I'm very passionate about, actually very, very passionate about. For anyone to minimalize my career over two decades, and again, they, you know, they say, well, two years at VCSO, at the Volusia County Sheriff's Office, and you know, this many years at Brevard County SO, or this many years at Edgewater PD. I worked over the course of two decades in law enforcement, and for them to minimalize my career over the course of those two decades is highly offensive to me. And it's also offensive, I think, to all the men and women who put their lives on the line every day to protect everyone in Volusia County. I've struggled as a woman with promotion and advancement in my career, you know, in a man's world. And there's a couple of things that I want to point out, because again, the only thing that's been coming out about my career has been very misleading and very negative stuff. My background in law enforcement is amazing. You know, in the last two years of my law enforcement career, I was at Volusia County Sheriff's Office, I was nominated Deputy of the Quarter, which is very rare, Randy can attest to that, for any deputy ever to be nominated for Deputy of the Quarter, and I was there two years. So to be nominated for Deputy of the Quarter, to receive commendations from the U.S. Marshal Service, from probation and parole, you know, lots and lots of letters of commendations and things. And I would just like to point this out, and you guys are more than happy to go through here. This is my record of my commendations and certifications from those two decades in law enforcement that I would carry to court to be able to show, you know, here is my background and to testify in lots of the cases that I did. So that's my background in law enforcement. Okay. The, sorry, I'm getting a little passionate now, but the issue about drug use, I can tell you unequivocally, I'm not a crackhead. You know, I've never been cited for drug use, ever, anywhere in my whole career. And the one thing I can say is, I would like to say, I would like to ask Al right here, right now, you know, let's ask Al. I went through all these, you know, I went to a couple of different agencies throughout my career, throughout my law enforcement career. Every time you go to a different agency, you have to take drug tests. Every time you go to a different agency, you have to take background checks. I passed all of those. VCSO never complained about any past drug use. They never complained about any, you know, anything in my background. They hired me, I worked there, and I did very well. I would like to say right now, I'm willing to take a drug test today, a hair follicle test, which will show, you know, however many months back, that I've never, that there are no drugs in my system. And I truly, truly think that Al Smith would not, but if he would like to do that, I'm absolutely in agreement to go out and do that right now.
I think he should do it too.
Yes.
The allegations, Heather, was about drug use when?
Oh, so that's another interesting thing. The paperwork that is being reported, apparently people are not looking, didn't take my age into consideration when these, when this paperwork was created, because they're alleging that my drug use was when I was 11 years old. So I apparently did coke when I was 11 years old. And I can tell you, and I'll explain a little bit more about my background, but, you know, I had a hard life and, you know, it wasn't a good family, but, and I'm getting very passionate again, but, you know, my parents were dopers, and I didn't do drugs when I was 11 or 12 or on and on. So anyway, let's see.
Why don't you start at 14, remember?
Okay. All right, so let me just tell you about my, let me tell you about my background. So I left home at 14, literally left home a week after my 14th birthday, and I've been on my own ever since. I have, you know, basically raised myself, you know, got jobs right away, took care of myself, was homeless on the street for a little while, got jobs.
Why is any of this even relevant? You run for public office now.
Well, that is a good question. So what I would ask is why aren't we focused on policies? And why are we focused on all this ridiculous stuff? Why are we focused on all this hate? And where is the focus on policy? The reason that Al Smith is not focusing on policy is because he has none. And in addition, he has no record to run on. So he has to come up with all of this stuff and put it out in the public over and over and over again in order to try and win at the last minute. And I have to say, you know, I see it as a move of a very desperate person, as a very desperate campaign and as a...
But let her finish. Heather, you run a role. They're alleging repossession and evictions and foreclosure as though this is derogatory information. Why don't you tell the media and the supporters about that? Is that derogatory?
No, I will agree to, you know, I will say, yes, I was evicted from an apartment. Yes, I did have a repossession 20 years ago when I was working my rear end off to raise my daughter. So, and I'm going to get very passionate now, but...
Don't get too passionate.
But as you can see, Megan has turned out absolutely amazing.
Your daughter was living with you when you were evicted?
Absolutely. Yep. And, you know, oh, she's going to... Even, you know, even when we came to Volusia County, we were struggling. When I worked at Edgewater PD, not a lot of people know this, but my daughter went, she had the opportunity to go to Yale, I can't look at it, but she had the opportunity to go to Yale over the summer, and, you know, I was on the road, I was working road patrol, and we actually, or I, lived without electricity all summer so that she could go to Yale over the summer. That's something you do, I think, as a parent, and that's something you do, you know, to constantly move ahead and to really be successful in life. And we've moved on from that, and I have become successful. And since I've been in Volusia County, I've been in Volusia County for 15 years, and I've done some amazing things in Volusia County. And there are many people in here who have volunteered next to me in many, many capacities. And again, I also have sheets, not only do I have sheets that the media can take home, page after page after page of my law enforcement awards and achievements, but also my community service awards and achievements locally, not somewhere else, which again, is another lie that my opponent is putting out, saying I have zero record of public achievement or service in my community. I would say, in my company, the company that I created by myself when I left the sheriff's office, you know, when, just out of nowhere, I created that company, and I got Small Business of the Year award in the first year of business with the Daytona Regional Chamber. The next year, what else was it?
Fabulous Women.
Fabulous Women of Business Award, Influential Women of Business Award from the News Journal in 2014. There are many, many things that I can cite, and for, and again, I'm highly offended that my opponent would go on television and go on all these ads and say that I have zero record of public service or achievement in this county, because in the 15 years that I have been here, I have had way more public service and certainly record of achievement than he has had in living in his entire life here, so.
Well, your struggles through life seem like they would be more representative of all the people that are in this community and that you would stand for a lot of the things that a lot of people have lived through in their life. Not everybody's had everything handed to them, and their father gave them a restaurant.
Well, and I think that's a good point too, is that has been the whole purpose of my, or the whole, you know, message in my campaign is I represent the people. I know what it's like to struggle, and I know what it's like to do well, I know what it's like to be a single mom, and I know what it's like to have an amazing husband, you know? And I know what it's like to have an amazing daughter and to do all of those kind of things. I know what it's like to be a small business owner and an entrepreneur. I know what it's like to be a law enforcement officer and deal with that. You know, when you talk about the homeless issue, I know what it's like to be homeless, and I know what it's like to deal with the homeless in law enforcement. If you took someone off of the street, you walked down Main Street, Ormond Main Street, and you were to pluck someone off the street, I guarantee you that I would have a lot in common with that person. You know, I can relate, and I get it. And, go ahead. You know, you mentioned that, you know, I wish that I had had the family that Al Smith has had, you know, good for him. He's had a, his father, I've heard amazing things about him, and it's fantastic that his father was a great man, but he's not his father. And, you know, I think, I think the point there would be, is I started with nothing and came here, and he came here and is now left with nothing. He has never been a success in anything that he's tried to achieve. And I can, you know, I have a proven track record of being successful over and over and over in everything that I try and do.
And you support veterans.
And I definitely support veterans, yes. Hi, guys.
That's why I'm here.
And you can relate to the business world, not only the poor people, you can relate to all the business people too, because I've seen you at so many business events.
Right, and Nancy...
And so well-respected.
Nancy and I met actually when I first started my company, and when you were starting your company.
Exactly.
And we went through that whole entrepreneurial process together, which was, which is brilliant. But we both made it, and now we're both successful.
And you were always inspired, aspiring to it.
Thank you very much. So one of the things that I would like to address though is, you know, the things that have been happening, obviously, my opponent's side has revved up, revved up his campaign and revved up his team, and, you know, I look at it, it's actually a little bit motivating to me to feel as if, hmm, wow, you know, here I am, Heather Post, you know, came from nowhere, a woman, yes, a woman business owner in Volusia County, for heaven's sakes, and I'm running for county council, and I have the establishment so worried that I'm going to come in and actually make policies based on what is right for the people and not based on special interests, that they are pulling out all the stops. You know, $200,000 to run negativity campaigns about me is crappy, but, you know, it makes me feel actually sort of good that they consider me that much of an opponent and that much of a, you know, well, that much of a threat, but, and I think it's simply...
You're worth that much money to them.
But I think that it's...
Heather, can we take a couple of questions?
Go ahead.
I want to ask a couple, and some of the people in the media, they, these ads, these negative ads keep talking about termination, Brevard County termination. How long were you at the Brevard County Sheriff's Office?
I worked down there about 10 years.
Okay. What's all this about, they're trying to suggest there's something derogatory about your termination. What's, is that true? What is that about?
Okay, I was not terminated from Brevard County Sheriff's Office. I'll try and sum this up as short as possible, but I had the opportunity with Brevard County Sheriff's Office to do something that actually no one else had, and I don't think anyone else has had since. I started that position, I started as a uniform road patrol position there, working crimes not in progress, so in uniform, in the car, responding to missing persons and burglaries. I did that, and then instead of them putting me on the road and paying for me to go to the academy, they put me into an investigative position, and I worked that for many, many years as a detective. And so I was actually fortunate to do that, my daughter was two at the time, so it was...
But you're not telling us about the termination.
Okay.
What's that about? They're saying that there's something, they're suggesting something...
So several years later, I said, I said, I'm going to go on the road, and I went on the road, and then they said, well, you don't know how to work the road, even though I had already worked the road before, and I went back into civilian work there. I went back into my role.
There was no misbehavior? Were you engaged in any misbehavior or bad behavior at the Brevard County Sheriff's Office?
No.
So this suggestion they're putting in the ad doesn't sound like it rings completely true.
No. And I would like to address termination from Volusia County Sheriff's Office, because that is a whole nother direct mailer which I don't have here to, or you?
Well, is that helpful?
It's the same thing, okay. So let me explain Volusia County Sheriff's Office. There's a commercial out now, and there's a direct mail piece and all kinds of stuff going out that says Heather Post was terminated from the Volusia County Sheriff's Office, and Ben Johnson thinks that she's, you know, a horrible person and has no more character. That could be farther from the truth. I, well, I was terminated, if you would say that, from the Volusia County Sheriff's Office, very shortly after a very, by the way, good career with being nominated Deputy of the Quarter, all of that kind of stuff, not negative stuff. And shortly after that termination, the state came in and did an investigation, found me to be completely cleared of everything, said there was no violations of policies or procedures or anything else. And by the way, the violation of policy and procedure that I was fired on was not calling my captain myself. So that's sort of insane.
And what was the conclusion?
The conclusion was that there was no violation of policies, no violation of procedures. They read, they said, we'll give you your job back. They gave me all my back pay, they gave me a settlement, and I quit.
So do you feel like the way they portrayed it here is somewhat misleading?
They are being very misleading with everything. Yes.
Isn't it true that they also apologized to you?
Well, if you'd call it that.
I want to ask another question that bothers me about this campaign. They cited here polygraph tests, and the News Journal published something about internal VCO employee investigation reports.
So let me just say, I have...
Is this stuff legitimate public record?
As far as I understand, it is not, and I have not even been able to get a copy of whatever this is. Maybe you have it.
I do.
The News Journal has it. I have been unable to get a copy of whatever record that is, that is supposed to be...
Are polygraph tests done in connection with a law enforcement application part of the public record?
They are not supposed to be part of it.
How does this stuff that nobody else has out there on them, there's supposed to be confidential information?
That's a good question to ask the power brokers in Volusia County that are running Al Smith's campaign.
And what is the media doing, to your knowledge, about investigating how the people that oppose you have access to these records that to most of us seem like they ought to be off-record and not subject to this sort of exposure?
Nothing that I have seen, so I would also like to address that. There, you know, they noted, maybe the, oh, it isn't here, they noted, okay, you can go to the Brevard County Clerk of Court website, you can see that I was evicted at some time, you can see that, you know, I had a repossession or this and that. Well, I would suggest the News Journal and whoever else that is doing these, you know, very deep investigations into things that I did 30 years ago, that maybe they go to the Volusia County Clerk website, and maybe they look at all of the liens and judgments that are against Al Smith for failing in business, and, I'm trying to think of a better word, but screwing people out of, can't think of a better word, but, you know, in his business. Or maybe the fact, you know, on here, he says he's the owner-operator of Angel and Phelps Cafe. That's a lie. He's not the owner-operator of Angel Phelps Cafe. He's also said, you know, he's a successful events promoter. He doesn't even have a company. The company that he uses went out of, the name went out of business in 2012. So he's actually operating and making money on the citizens of Volusia County without even a company. He sponsored his company in different things.
What has Al Smith actually succeeded at or accomplished?
I haven't found anything that he has ever succeeded in in his life. I don't know, maybe, maybe you could tell me. Dustin, do you know? No?
Well, let me also say, we want to give the media a chance, this is a press conference. Gentlemen, does anybody prefer to go first?
Yeah, I'll ask a question.
Thank you.
Well, let's discuss the PAC that Smith has.
Okay.
The paid for the ad. Do you think that the wealthy men in this, in this county are out to get you?
I, no, I don't believe that in any, I don't think, I mean, although I'm, you know, somewhat humbled that they are doing this, it's, I don't think it's against me personally. Do I think the fact that I'm a woman and that I'm successful and that bottom line that I have shown that I can't be bullied comes into play and is not making them very happy? Absolutely. But I think it's specifically because the person that they want to have in there to puppet is not winning, and they're desperate, so.
And why do they want Al Smith?
Because I'm assuming he will do their bidding. Although in past business, I, he hasn't seemed to have done a whole lot, you know, he represents that he's on all these boards, that he's been on all these boards in the past, or he's lived in the community his whole life. And again, I would tout that, I've lived here 15 years, and I've done way more in this community than, you know, than he's...
You've mentioned the good old boy system between the past, explain that. But the good old boy system is in your eyes?
Well, just what I said. You know, the establishment, people that maybe not, don't necessarily approve of women being in these roles and...
Who'd they go drinking with?
Hyatt Brown and all of the people that are in the PAC, and Hyatt Brown has made it very evident that he is, you know, he's been quoted several times saying all kinds of stuff about me. You know, and I don't know if they remember, but I've met Hyatt Brown many, many times in the community before this even happened, and I actually sat next to them when I was nominated for Citizen of the Year through the Bob Graham Center for Public Service for the State of Florida, Citizen of the Year for the State of Florida, I actually sat at their table. But I, you know, apparently they don't remember that.
Heather, I'd like to kick in now. I've listened to a lot. I've seen a broad brush painted today, even by you. Let's be clear, perfectly clear about what media or media outlets you are referring to that have slammed you with these attack ads.
Well, the News Journal.
And who else?
Oh, the News Journal and the radio stations which Al works with.
Are you talking about WNDB?
Yes.
You talking about Black Crow Media? That's the parent company.
Mark Bernier Show.
TV stations publish the ads, do they not?
Yes, yes, they do.
Were they not compensated financially?
Of course.
How big was the ad in Sunday's News Journal, which I just saw for the first time yesterday because I live in Seminole County? How, half a page?
I think a half a page, right?
Has anyone inquired how much that cost? How much of this negative stuff?
Well, so, so, well, let me just say, we're talking about $13,000, but they have spent $200,000 to come out with, you know, to paint me as a horrible person and to not, you know...
Is there any precedent in Volusia County council politics of anybody spending that much money on a council race?
Oh my gosh, so this is, everyone that I have heard of, you know, is saying that this is absolutely insane, that this is going on in a local race. I've talked with even politicians at a much, much higher level, and they're all saying this is absolutely insane. And I truly, in my heart, believe, you know, it's not against me specifically, I truly in my heart believe that it is because I have shown I can't be bullied, and I think for myself, and I'm, you know, I don't have a giant education, I didn't, you know, go to Yale like Megan, but, you know, and I left school early, but I went and got my GED, and then I went into college courses at night while I had two jobs, and I, you know, this is all my training and certifications, thousands of hours over the years. I'm a pretty intelligent person, and, you know...
How much has been spent altogether between both candidates, whether it's PACs or direct funding in 2016 election cycle in total?
I'm not sure. So I know his campaign has about $200,000, and I think I have about $120,000. And I have to say that I really want to thank my supporters, because I don't have these giant power brokers behind me, and I have amazing, amazing supporters, and without those supporters and without those contributions, I would not be able to fight ridiculousness like this. I wouldn't still be in the race, which I also think is interesting, because apparently you can't go into politics as, you know, just a real person. And so I'm glad I'm still here.
Two Fridays ago, HeadlineSurfer.com held a public candidate debate, and Al Smith and you, Heather Post, readily agreed to participate in it. None of this stuff came up. In fact, you were the one who raised the issue about crack and translating to cocaine, and...
Well, I'm a little offended by some of this.
Well, I mean, the bottom line is, we were taken aback, because in our ethics and our training, I certainly wouldn't be digging up something about polygraph on cocaine or one's relationship with one's parent as a teenager. I just think that is so wholly inappropriate, and it's such a, it's such a broad brush.
It's being discussed daily on the Mark Bernier Show, it's being discussed daily on the WNDB, it's being discussed almost every other day as an article on news.
I think the bottom line question I'd have for both of you, and, you know, from the other side's point of view, you too have big money behind you. You just don't have one of the big three.
You just don't have the, one of the big three, um, in Hyatt Brown, Lisa France Kennedy, Maury Housany, uh, what I have termed the insiders. But you have others that are almost as prominent. If either of you gets, one of you's gonna get elected in, what, another eight or nine days? How much of the public is gonna buy into your viability, either of you, with this kind of money that's in, and this kind of mudslinging?
So I actually think that's a really good question, and, um, there are some people here that, uh, from groups that have endorsed me. And so I, I would really like to address that. So I have been endorsed...
Please do.
Um, was it six, Meghan?
Six to one.
I've been endorsed by six of the associations and organizations that I have, that I, both Al and myself went in front of to an interview for, and they vetted us, they checked us, looked into our background, and they endorsed me over Al, six of those. Um, the very final one, for whatever reason, as all this was rubbing up, um, decided to endorse Al, which is, which is fine. But the reason, and I'm sure that he can attest to this hopefully, is that the reason that they endorsed me was because I went in and I said, "Look, um, you know, I know that you have your, you have things that you want passed, and you have, uh, your agendas and different things that, that you're looking at, um, and legislation and everything. But I'm telling you that if you're looking for someone who is gonna say, "Absolutely, I'm gonna vote on that, I'm gonna vote on everything that you want when you come to me," um, I'm the wrong candidate." And I told everybody that. And I said, "Because I can't in good conscience say that." But what I am telling you is that I'm very fair, I'm very open-minded, I'm fairly intelligent, um, and I'm, I'm very proactive in, in getting information and really making sure that I'm, I've got, you know, all the information relative to, to whatever it is that I'm making a decision on. Because I understand, because I'm a real, real-world person, and I'm not up here, um, you know, in my little ivory tower not noticing anything, because I'm a real-world person and I understand that every decision that is made on the county council has an effect on a lot of different people. And, you know, I realize I'm not gonna be able to make everybody happy in every decision, but I guarantee that I will look at the whole perception and I will make the best decision possible for the greater good. And that is why I got the endorsements. There was no backroom meetings, there was no, uh, you know, no agreements made, nothing like that. That is why I got those endorsements.
Do you see the... Do you see the irony of the fact that a lot of the unions in law enforcement endorsed you, yet management, i.e. retiring Sheriff Ben Johnson, incoming Sheriff Mike Chitwood? By the way, uh, your opponent's campaign consultant is on Chitwood's transition team, and that'd be Mike Scudero, who's been your biggest critic, or the biggest mouth, the most venomous mouthpiece against you...
Right.
...that I've seen in the media.
I've, I've absolutely seen some very unprofessional...
Including my Facebook page this morning.
Yep, I've absolutely seen some unprofessionalism on that side and, you know...
Is that what you're referring to? I'm sorry, is that what you're referring to as the good old boy network in some regard?
Absolutely.
And would either you or your husband attest, I realize you don't want to be rats, but would you attest that it's not so pristine in law enforcement, that there are deputies that have committed some acts of smashing up patrol cars, drunk driving? Let me finish, please.
Well, no, let me just say, let me just say, so, you know, when I left the sheriff's office, I, I was, uh, not happy with the realm of law enforcement. I was very disappointed, let's just say, in law enforcement when I left, that, that something like that could happen, period. So I was very disappointed. But I have to say, uh, I started my company and I went off and I said, "I'm gonna only work in corporate stuff." I'm, I'm never, I, I let my, I'm, uh, was an adjunct instructor at the Police Academy, the Detectives Academy, if they have law enforcement forces, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, over the years. And I let that lapse, I said, "I don't want anything to do with this," right? Um, but it's my heart. And so what ended up happening is I slowly evolved, and now I teach projecting professional image on the front lines and to command staff personnel, um, all over the US to public safety personnel. And I will never say anything poorly about that brotherhood, so...
Well, I'm not asking you to say anything poorly, but you're portrayed as this cokehead who, you know, is a derelict from the time you were 14, um, and...
11.
You're talking about, you know, there are, there are hundreds of incidents involving law enforcement that anyone could open up on any day.
Let me just say, people are people. And, you know, you're, you're gonna have people in any profession. So, um, I will say, uh, when I left, when I left the department, I did, you know, look into a number of things and, and, um, beyond all of that, what occurred to me was just absolutely reprehensible and ridiculous and...
If you were elected as county, uh, council person for District Four, would one of the priorities be getting better salaries and benefits so you can get a better rapport of, or employment situation with deputies countywide? Because it seems like the pay is a big, is a big obstacle.
It is a big obstacle, and I, again, that's one of the things that's gonna make me a great county council person, is I have been in a lot of different people's shoes. So when stuff comes across the dais, I know what they're talking about. And if I don't know, I've built and maintained relationships with the people who will, who will fill me in. And I've been in those shoes, and I know what they go through. I know that there's a reason the Hart bill was created in Tallahassee. Um, you know, I know that there's a number, a reason that a number of those statutes were created for, for law enforcement, for health, uh, you know, working night shifts, all kinds of things. But absolutely, I think that they should get more...
Now, I'm, I'm gonna finish up now. We talked briefly last night, and I asked you who you felt your real opponent was. Because when we did our debate...
Hyatt Brown.
Right, when we did our debate, hold on, please, everybody. Let me finish my question, please. Uh, thank you. When we did our debate, I didn't hear Al Smith talk about cocaine or, or, you know, being terminated from any agency or all this ugliness.
That's because he's been doing it in the background, and it's because he's been grabbing people by all the bells at early voting.
If you recall, when I asked at the debate, and you were there, I said, "Are you aware of any of this?" And he said he was aware of all of it. But yet, I don't see, I see Mike Scudero being quoted, I see Hyatt Brown being quoted. Do you buy Hyatt Brown's suggestion in the News Journal, uh, as, as late as yesterday, that he, he's doing this for the goodness of the community and that you're a bad apple?
Look, I'm, I think it's evident what it is. Uh, the citizens of Volusia County are not stupid. It, I think it's very evident what it is, and, and we've actually had some, we've had excellent feedback at the polls from people, um, because the citizens of Volusia County are stupid.
Is Al Smith a proxy for Hyatt Brown? Are you a proxy for George Anderson?
I am absolutely not a proxy for anyone. And, um, I have proven, you know, when I left the sheriff's office, I think I just proved six years ago that I am not afraid to stand up for what's right. And that's exactly what I did.
Thank you, that's all I had. Thank you.